Okay, I would like to call to order the Cumberland School Committee at 7:31 PM on Thursday, March 10th, 2022. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. The next item on the agenda is Approval of Agenda. Motion by Mrs. Rogalski. Second by Mrs. Feather, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Item A, Approval of Minutes from the Regular Meeting, 217, 2022, the Special Meeting, Budget Meeting, on 3/2, 2022. Approval of Minutes from the Executive Session, 217, 2022, the Enrollment Report, 3/1, 2022, the School Police Report, 2/1, 2022, the School Bus Inspection Reports, 3/1, 2022, the Residency Tourency Report, 3/1, 2022. Motion by Mrs. Rogalski.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero. The next item on the agenda is Personnel Announcements. Mrs. Dunkinson.
Oh, new location. I have a number of items tonight under Personnel Announcements. First are the retirements. I have three. Deborah Cutler, paraprofessional at Garvin, effective June 30th, 2022, retiring after 27 years of service. Lisa Moreau, grade five, teacher at Ashton Elementary, effective June 30th, 2022, after 34 years of service. And Holly Stoick, special educator at Cumberland High School, effective June 30th, 2022, after 21 years of service. I congratulate them on their retirement and thank them for their service. Moving on, unpaid personal leave of absence. Dorian McCormick, school psychologist at McCourt, effective March 2nd, 2022, through the end of the year. I have three resignations. Caitlin McMorrow, assistant principal at Cumberland High School, effective June 30th, 2022. Jana Gasparo, special educator at McCourt, effective March 23rd, 2022. And Melissa Paradise, social studies at McCourt, effective June 30th, 2022. Appointments, I have two for you tonight. Loretta Bennett, paraprofessional at Success BF Norton, effective February 28th, 2022, math interventionist, North Cumberland Middle School. Caitlin Protznetz, effective March 14th, 2022. And a bunch of coaches. Would you like me to go through the coaches individually or in total?
I think we all have the list. I think that would be okay.
Perfect. They're in your packet. Any questions tonight?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunkinson. The next item on the agenda is Report Out of Executive Session Meeting on March 10th, 2022. Report Out of Executive Session Votes, we did not take any votes in the executive session. Next item is a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Motion by Ms. Smith. Second by Mr. Fiorello, all in favor? Aye opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Thornton.
So tonight, we're going to have our first conversation around boundaries. We actually made this map like 20, I mean, I'm 13, 2014, so this is something we did back at that point. You see the five colors, you can see our community school, the red, Cumberland Hill, the green, yellow, the red. Same color as Garvin. Those are the five zones we have for elementaries. As you know, with school construction, we have down the road some boundaries to tweak as we look at the maps and the new school footprints. And we really have four boundary conversations we're going to have. No votes tonight, just conversations. So the first conversation. So Cumberland Hill, right now, after the construction, we're looking to pull in anywhere from, let's say, you know, 30 to 65 students, give or take. To do that, we look at the map and we can actually see where the neighborhoods are, where the kids are, and make some decisions based on the map. So right now, in this current scenario, in this green shaded area, Route 99, Highland Park, that area, that's what they were looking to incorporate that in potentially. Also, Lower West Rantham, all the way to Tower Hill, over here, looking at that. And also lastly, the Navigant Bank area. If you pulled all that in a year from now, you're pulling approximately 32 students, give or take, into Cumberland Hill. So that's just something to look at. We are adding a wing of Cumberland Hill, but it's not an entirely vacant wing, special education, art, music, but approximately, you know, say 30, 35 to 40 is a good number to pull. So that's off community, 650, right? So that conversation, we're hoping to get your input over the next two weeks, discuss it again, potentially look for a vote from you in April on Cumberland Hill, because that is for next year. But this one, we feel pretty good about as far as modeling and knowing where the kids are. So this is the first conversation. So once again, 99, Highland area, Navigant. So that is a conversation one to think about. Conversation two, we're not as far along. It's the Garvin BF conversation. And with that, we're looking at potentially holding in Meadowcrest and Redgate. Redgate, Meadowcrest, making BF a little smaller and Garvin getting a few more kids, approximately 30 to 40 students. Once again, not a big change, but given the construction and what the capacities are, it makes sense to have this conversation. This is something we don't have to really decide on for another year, right? Because Garvin's being, you know, worked on this next year. So this is a year away, but I wanted to give you a sense of where it would be. Meadowcrest, as I recall, used to be north, so it'd be kind of going back to that. So 30 to 40, just keep that in your mind for the BF-Garvin boundary conversation. The third conversation, Community at Ashton. So as we build a new wing at Ashton, a new K, a new one, it's a three-track school, 100, 120 students you could take out of Cumberland, out of community, community could end up being like a 500-student school from 650, which is much more manageable. So where would you get the numbers out of community? We're not completely there yet. Volunteer work is taking place right now. And in these areas, we're calling it Upper Little Pond County, Lower Little Pond County. We're looking at Broadview. Broadview down here, and the inside, look at that way. If that all came into play, I think right now, modeling it, that's still only around, say, 60, 75% of the ones we would project. So we're not there yet, we might have to go a little more. But so that is also another year away, don't need to make that decision, but we do, are building a new, the wing at Ashton will have another track, so you build it, they will come, right? So we have to, you know, make that adjustment and right-size community and get about 120 to Ashton. So that's also, that's a year away. The last conversation, much like the first conversation, I would need you to make a decision this year, that's the middle school conversation. So this is currently what the middle school boundary looks like, McCourt down here, north up here. The challenge right now we have is, given the staffing right now we have at McCourt, as you know from your budget, we reduced 2.6 positions, right? And we did that predicated on potentially making this shift. Right now, Garvin and Ashton, 96% of the kids go from Garvin and Ashton to McCourt. 4% approximately go from Garvin and Ashton to North. We're looking to just have all the Garvin and Ashtons simply go to McCourt. It's around 26 students right now projected. But that, what that'll do is, we can achieve the 2.6 reductions, and right now, I'm talking to Mrs. Coughlin, we're a little overloaded, projected for next year. If we don't make a change, we could potentially have people teaching out of their area on occasion. I teach English most of the day, and then I teach maybe one math class. Not ideal. So we would be looking for the middle for next year, and centrally, it's the Bear Hill area, over here, and Mendon Road, over here. So once again, that's approximately 26, 27 students. So that's something I'd have you think about, come back, talk about it again next meeting, potentially vote on it in April if possible. We want to get people to notice that we're thinking about this. So once again, Conversation One, Cumberland Hill, I need you to look at some action this spring. The second conversation, the BF-Garvin is a year off, the Community Ashton is down the road, and middle school, I would, once again, want you to take an action hopefully this spring. So happy to answer any questions you have on boundaries.
Mrs. Rogalski?
For the NCMS McCourt, we're only talking about current fifth graders rising, correct? We're not moving any students who are already in the middle schools or siblings of students who are already in the middle schools?
Exactly right. It'd be the current fifth grade, any kids already there would stay, any families would continue. If we had a seventh grader and a fifth grader sibling, they'd go north with their sibling. We wouldn't split families up. Just the fifth graders right now, the last 4% of Garvin and Ashton in fifth grade would, in this model, just go to McCourt. I would also mention one piece, looking at Mr. Torada's work, in the end, once we're done all this work in the district, he's projecting McCourt to be a little bit bigger than North. And right now, that's the opposite. So that's down the road.
Mrs. Feather?
Yep. On the Ashton Community map, there was a piece.
Ashton Community, hold that thought.
And this is really, really stupid, but, well, not stupid, but, well, yeah. Minute, there's a little piece of red right in between. What is that little piece? Nothing. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I was like, who's paying? Nothing. Thank you.
Sorry about that. So certainly, this will come back to you for discussion again next meeting. I probably wouldn't bring back to you the Ashton Community one next time or the Garvin-BF one, but I would bring back the first one and the fourth one for further discussion in the future. Probably a discussion again in March and maybe an action in April if possible.
And can you share these detailed plans with us?
We will. We'll share you the info and the notes here I have.
Okay. Are there any questions, comments for Dr. Thornton, Mr. Fiorello?
Dr. Thornton, how do you plan on notifying these families, or notifying the town really, that potential changes are happening? I know we've actually discussed this probably for three years, even going beyond when we were advocating for the bond referendum, we were making it very clear that redistricting was going to happen as a result, but I'm curious what our plans for the future are.
If you were to vote in April on, say, the first conversation of the Cumberland Hill adjustment, we'd certainly notify all the families on multiple occasions, all spring, the newspaper, Town Hall, it'd be multiple conversations and advertisements throughout the whole spring. That's why, it's not something you can do in the summertime if you really get this out there in the springtime.
Mr. DeMonica?
I would just want to say that, I mean, the voters have approved the bond, the $80 million bond, which is at 78 million, and this was part of the goal and the studies that were done with parents and stakeholders in town about if we did these additions in these schools, what would it look like moving children down the road? And, you know, the time of reckoning is coming soon, and parents need to understand this is going to happen, whether they like it or not. And we tried moving children from Broadview, not Broadview, but Bear Hill once before, and that turned out to be a logistics nightmare. I'm glad that we're starting now to let the public know that this is coming down the road and it's, you know, that's going to happen. Thank you.
Dr. Thornton, will you have the listing of those specific roads of impact for the next meeting? Is that what you're going to? Because I know you're, we're mentioning neighborhoods right now, because I think, well, Bear Hill is not the issue, it's Cargill, and Lower Bear Hill versus the upper's already part of, so there's only patches, so I want to know if we're going to, you know, start naming the roads and providing that at a meeting before we vote so that parents are hearing it and can come speak.
Yeah, I think next meeting for the first and fourth conversation, we'd give you a more granular map with actual streets and cutoffs and, you know, the actual locations on the map.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Thornton on that? Okay. All right. Thank you. He gets back for his next item.
Madam Chair, just to give you info, we had the flu clinic at the high school recently. I'll just give you some quick numbers for folks involved. Number of children, 559 came out, adults in the town, 428, down a little bit from the previous year. Previous year, we had 604 students get the flu shot, and previous year for adults, 467. So down a little bit, not sure why that would be, we just give you that information. Next up, Madam Chair, a few announcements, upcoming events, we have a weekend show, variety show, March 11 and 12, so if you can come out, please come out. We have an all-band concert at the Wellness Center on May 4th, and also, as you know, graduation outside here. And graduation is June 10th, 6:00 PM, rain date, the 11th, at Tucker Field, so that should be a great event. My last piece, Madam Chair, just a school construction update, just one piece in that the Building Committee met Monday night and they did a vote to send the designs, the final designs for community into Ashton to Ride, the next step in the process. So that's moving forward, and we should hear back from Ride in a couple of weeks if they approve the final designs. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Thornton? Mr. DeMonica?
Dr. Thornton, did I understand it correctly that someone had told me that some of the bids for the schools came over, then what they thought they were going to be budgeted for?
Right now, in our meeting, Holly Demers from Colliers did talk about, in our first go-around with Cumberland Hill, we actually did better than expected with the bids, kind of the pre-COVID bid, if you will. Now with COVID, with costs going up, some of the jobs are in two phases, like Community School has a cafeteria in Phase One, and we'd have liked that job to come in about a million lower than it came in. So it's still not, these numbers are just estimators right now, they're not out yet with actual companies taking them. So a lot can happen between now and then. Also, we have other monies in the budget, in soft costs, in soil, in reserve to kind of like pivot. So it's still early, but the two cost estimators priced these jobs a little higher than the last job. So that is something to look at, but, you know, we still think we have other options. As you recall, the state did reduce us by $4 million from the original bond of 83 to 79, so that's something, that's a conversation to be had possibly. And also, we do have another $2 million available to us from our previous health and safety bond through the town. So, yeah, that was, the estimators, the two companies did price it a little higher than we would have liked for Phase One, for community and for Ashton.
All right, thank you, Dr. Thornton. The next item on the agenda is Reports of Standing Committees. First one, Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update, Mr. Collins.
Good evening. The Fiscal Management Subcommittee met tonight. We had a brief meeting because we had a pretty tight schedule. We have 11 resolutions for your approval this evening. We've payment the bills. During the budget report, Mr. Prignano reported that our budget, we're still in the black for this year, it's going to be tight, but we're still in the black. And the only other thing is out of facilities. Anybody knows a good John Deere person, we're having trouble getting our tractor. So that came, we still haven't gotten our tractor yet, we have a purchase order, but anyway, so we're taking it, taking advice. But anyway, we have payment the bills and we have 11 resolutions, and I also want to point out that the meeting ended, still ended nine minutes early, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I was impressed. Our next item is the Policy and Procedure Subcommittee Update, Mr. Fiorello?
We did not meet this week, you know, mainly because of the budget season, but we will be meeting in two weeks, hopefully.
Next item is the Achievement and Communication Subcommittee Update, we also did not meet this week as well. And the next item is the District Health and Wellness Subcommittee Update, Mrs. Rogalski?
The District Health and Wellness Meeting is scheduled for April 7th.
Thank you. Okay, and the next item on the agenda is comments from the public. If anyone from the public would like to speak, you can come up to the microphone, state your name, state your address. There's a three-minute limit. I see President, Town Council President, Mr. Kinch, coming up.
Before I start, I just got a small comment I want to make. I just want to thank the retirees on behalf of the Town Council for the service to the town, and I also want to welcome the new members that you just hired. We look forward to working with them. But I just want a quick comment. Mr. Fiorello brought up a very good point about us with our liaisons to the Parks and Recreation Commission, we made that official, we made Bob Shaw, he was the, he's always been a longstanding person, always interested in recreation, but I did want to give you folks a heads-up that I am presenting an ordinance for presentation to make those non-voting members. So just, yes, just so they'd be advice and relaying the information back rather than voting on the committee. So that's been the longstanding practice since I remember.
If I could just add to that, right. So as the liaison from the School Committee for Parks and Rec, I have not participated in votes, I have abstained from voting because it had been my understanding all along that we were not voting members. Mr. Fiorello did approach me the last meeting here and asked me about that, and I think that that's where that's coming from. So it doesn't have much of an impact, but, right. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's just formalizing what's always been done, and of course, you know, if there's any other point of view on that, when we do obviously have the public hearing on it, anybody's more welcome to speak. My point is on a smaller, or I guess the same, same point would be almost a separation of powers. You know, let's try to keep the elected people, you know, elected officials away from the people who are volunteering their time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kinch. Any other comments from the public? Yep. You can come on up, state your name and your address, and just know that there's a three-minute limit.
Scientist Emmy wanted to do a PowerPoint, but my children begged me not to. My name is Kathleen Demers, I live at 13 Westwood Drive, my children have asked that I don't bring up their names. So I'm here as a concerned parent and Cumberland High School student, he's a junior, name not to be mentioned, and a resident of the town of Cumberland. I have been here since my children were in preschool, and now we are hopefully going to be graduating next year with my oldest, my youngest will be going to Hendrickson. If you have received a call from me, I'm sure if your deans are in attendance here, heard that I've been pretty upset about the situation, the traffic situation in front of the high school. My son asked me today, why are you going to speak? And I said, you know, he goes, I'm graduating, it doesn't matter. When I was 15 years old, I was hit and dragged by another teenager who was driving, blew through some stop signs, and hit the accelerator instead of a brake. And I spent high school in a multiple cast and getting carted back and forth to school. It has been a lifelong thing, so I felt like the need to say something. I understand logistically, when I look at this situation in the front of the school with traffic, with buses, and you have construction going on at an elementary school, and your children hear from that school, as well as the busing, the teachers, commuters like myself who are going up towards, you know, Boston on Mendon, that it is a logistical nightmare to, you get children turning into Tucker Field, and then you have hordes of children crossing, and not at the crosswalk, which is up ahead near the bridge where there is an attendant. Nobody's directing traffic, which I find upsetting because you have so much of it. I work for Siemens up in East Wallpool, I don't know if anybody's familiar with Coney Street, it's very, it's a cut-through, has a lot of congestion, just like Mendon Road. It goes from the Providence, Old Providence Highway, Route 1, to 95 North exit. We put a $700 million expansion on, we have tractor-trailer trucks coming into this manufacturing site, we added 700 more employees. This actual promise we made to the town of Wallpool was a fire truck and a crosswalk with a traffic light, with multiple cameras facing the entrance of my building, facing down Coney Street, facing towards the exit to 95 and into the neighborhoods, because we have employees that actually live in the surrounding neighborhood. And somebody has been hit in front of my company. So I'm not here, I mean, obviously, I'm venting. I went to work that one day that Michael was marked late again. I've been, it's been recommended that I show up 30 minutes before the bell to have my son make it, and sometimes he's two minutes late, and sometimes he's five minutes late, and sometimes it's him. I get it, he's a kid. But when I'm trying to get him there, because we live too close to the school, he's expected to walk, whether the weather's bad. Mendon Road is a disaster, it's not safe to begin with, I don't know why our crosswalks aren't repainted, I don't understand that.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we've reached the limit, but I hear your concerns, and I will follow up with the superintendent, and maybe we need to look a little closer at this as well.
Yeah, I can even give you a picture of what we have out in front of Siemens, because it actually is pretty impressive. We have a turning lane and a flashing yellow, and that would make a lot more sense than what we're doing right now. So I'm just up here, I don't want to see another child go through what I went through. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, then the next item on the agenda is New Business. One of our most favorite topics, which is Discussion of the School Calendar, 2022 to 2023. Dr. Thornton is presenting four different options, so I'll hand it over to you.
Exciting time for the calendar. So tonight is discussion only, and I'll try to give you an overview and then take you through each of the different options, and at the end, I'll recommend one. Discussion only tonight, and we'll come back again, hopefully have you vote in a couple of weeks. In all these calendars, we have a couple constants. The first is, we're looking to really start after Labor Day, given the construction, given that we have to move Garvin up this way and move Cumberland Hill back to where they live, so after Labor Day, to us, would be really advantageous, given the construction schedules and all the moves, that kind of thing. The other constants in all four calendars, you'll see August 31 being the orientation day, you'll see our first two PD days being on the 1st and 2nd of September in all four models, and you'll see the phased-in first day of school on 6 and 7 in September in all four models, and you'll see parent-teacher conferences on December 7 in all four models. So let me take you through now, if you turn to Option A, I'll just kind of take you through kind of the highlights. So after having given you those pieces, you can see once again the staff orientation in August, the 6/7 is boxed off for you, you can see those, or we phased in our opening. You can then see, on this model, the big chain starts in February. In some of the calendars, you'll see there's a full Feb vacation, some it's truncated, some you don't have one. In this Option A model, it's a full February vacation. You then see in this model, Option A, the third and final PD day on March 15. Also, I should tell you, in talking to Ride, Ride next year will allow us, if you have a PD day during the regular school year, we can count that as a DL day one time. So that's actually new news for me, so I'd be amending this calendar one day forward if you did on this Option A model, okay? So third PD day, March 15, last day of school, June 22. And like I said, having taught in the classroom, June days get more and more difficult, so I really gravitate towards earlier June as I look at these, but Option A is June 22. If you turn the page to Option B, same opening, same phase-ins, September 6, 7, you then go to February vacation, it's shortened, we have the Monday, the 20th, President's Day, and then a PD day on the 21st. Once again, we could shift up one day, given Ride's DL option, but that calendar gets out on June 15, which would now be June 14 with that shift up. Option C, same opening, but would now be June 14 with that shift up. Option C, same opening, but now, if you look, we have the 3rd PD day on primary day, which is different. So that's an option. And then in this model, it's the full February vacation, and then last day of school, the 21st in this model. And option D, you can see once again, same opening, same 6/7 September. Once again, the 3rd PD day on primary day, and this one has no February vacation, just Monday, President's Day, and you get out on the 14th on this model. Now, I should also mention, in this calendar, we contemplated just the holidays in the contracts of the employees. We didn't contemplate all the other holidays. And looking at Smithfield, basically doesn't have a good idea, I think. They took every holiday that there is and made a box and put them all on the calendar, and we're basically saying, to the extent we can, if someone's out for Rosh Hashanah, we wouldn't want to schedule a major exam on Rosh Hashanah, if that's something we could do. But we're only modeling the holidays in the contracts for your review. So that's essentially the four calendars. A slight variation on February vacation in each one. The PD days are moved around a little bit, and Feb vacation is either truncated, eliminated, or you have a full Feb. So happy to answer any questions.
What is your recommendation?
My recommendation is B.
Mrs. Feather?
B, which gets you out on the 14th. It'd be the 14th with the correction, because that has the 3rd PD day, I'm sorry. Thank you. February 21st, yes. To me, I'd rather be in school, I think, in the winter and get out earlier in June, but that's just my thinking on that. I know the teachers also, I did talk to the president to do some survey work, and they did give you some information on that. You can share that. I know they gave you their thinking on that. Last thing I'd say is, I would resist the temptation to survey, because any survey you'll get will typically be kind of a mixed bag. It really is just what you all, in talking to folks, what you think makes sense. We have two weeks, though, for the community to weigh in and talk to you all, and then hopefully we can come back with a vote next meeting.
Mrs. Feather?
And Mr. Collins? So just two quick questions. On all of the calendars, then, would it be a day, would it be a day backwards? So the 13th, 21st, because of the PD day thing?
Only if the PD day is during a school day. So if it's on primary day, I don't believe we would get that benefit. But the March 15 one, yes. February 21st, yes. Right, those two, definitely.
Right. And thank you. And the other thing is, just with the religious holidays, I think it's great to make sure that nothing big is scheduled during those. Will the kids also get unexcused absences on those days?
I believe that's in policy.
Excused, yeah, sorry.
In policy, yeah.
Thank you. All right, great. Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Dr. Thornton, you mentioned surveying, and I don't know if you were referring to the public, but I think it has been common practice to survey the CTA.
The president did survey her membership and gave some information to the chair.
Yep. And I can share that.
That'd be great. And can you give it, yeah, was ICSI surveyed, and were your building administrators surveyed as well, and other staff?
We also met with the president and vice president of ICSI. I don't recall if they actually did a formal survey, but they did kind of talk amongst the folks. And Ms. Dunkinson, I don't recall, Ms. Dunkinson, I don't recall if you recall the ICSI preference for the calendar. I don't recall if they had a strong...
Yeah.
Oh, so it came down to February vacation. Okay.
Yeah. And I think that's pretty similar on the CTA side. The CTA was surveyed, about half of them responded, and 59% of that half that responded prefer a calendar with February vacation. But, I mean, that's a 60/40 split as well, and not the full, not the full results. But I, my experience does tell me that this calendar issue tends to be a 50/50 split, any way you look at it.
Okay, any, Mrs. Rogalski?
First, thanks for all the work. Is there a reason that we are moving away from the Unified State Calendar? Because I know that for some teachers who have students, who have children in other districts that might teach in district, district, or their students, their children go here and they teach in another district, it was really nice to have those synchronous vacations. Is there a reason that we're not doing a state-unified one anymore?
I think the first piece was, as you recall, last year, RIDE allowed for five DL days inside of the 180. That's no longer the case. I think a lot of districts have different PD pieces built in. Some districts in like East Bay have, I think, 187-day calendar with like six PD days. Some like Warwick have almost no PD built in. So it gets very complicated when you try to pick one calendar for everyone. I think even things like April Vacation, we did a survey of superintendents, and 22 responded. Most modeled the RIDE, actually the RIDE calendar is on here in the end, yeah. Most, 20 out of 22 soups picked the first, the week in April that RIDE wants. So only two, Smithfield and Smithfield, I think, went the 17th of April. Let me ask you a question. I think it's such a local control thing, and union contracts can be very unique. I think people have different needs. We have a construction component on us. Other schools don't have. A lot of schools go before Labor Day, which I like myself. But with construction, I think the last piece of Cumberland Hills turned over to us on August 26, I want to say, the last section. So we need every day we can get. So it's very unique.
I agree. As someone who grew up going, never starting before Labor Day and always having a mid-winter February break, I like that. However, I think this year, I'm looking at the end dates in January, or June 21st, June 22nd. You add in two school, two snow days, and we're into the last week of June for the last week, for the last day of school. And I just, I don't find that acceptable to have our students in school that late. So I, like with the February vacation.
On snow, I still need a little more clarity, but I believe there still is potential from RIDE. If there's a snow event and I use the RIDE portal, I could potentially still get a DL day and count it as one of the 180. I'm not certain on that, based on what I've heard from RIDE. I have to get more clarity on that. But that is, I think, a possibility.
That was one of my questions. The other question I had, is it possible, on option B, just because we all know that March lasts forever for students, for teachers, for staff who are already burned out, and students who, before we go into testing, which is usually in April, is it possible to move the PD day that is currently for February 21st? Would that be possible to move it to March just to give a break of one day, do a three-day weekend, something just to give teachers and students? I'm not sure if that's an option at all.
You certainly could. I believe on one of the calendars...
It's March 15.
Which one is that? Do you see which one?
Yeah, Calendar A. I'm just looking at option B.
Right, it's kind of like an A...
Presented that has the 21st.
In A hybrid, you just, you know, you're still shrinking the February vacation in B, but you're moving the PD day. That'd be totally, totally fine.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if there's flexibility just to have that singular day in March, just to break it up just a little bit. Because I know I hear a lot from teachers...
You certainly could. That'd be, I guess, option E.
Thank you. That's what we need, more options. Mr. Ferriello?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what I've said in the past, is that I do not support distance learning days for snow days, just because I think there's too much inequity built into that with families that aren't there to support their students. Just, there's too many variables involved, and I think that we should just have normal snow days. So.
Any other comments or questions about the calendar? Okay, Ms. Smith?
In looking at this, I understand why the holiday things were changed for the different religious holidays. And my understanding in speaking with the superintendent is that Good Friday is still on here because that's part of the contract with the teachers. And I certainly hope in the future that we look at an all or nothing. We certainly, yes, we've celebrated Good Friday in this state for a very long time, but there's a couple of other very large religious holidays, and we're not putting them all in. We were just putting one for each of them for their most important. So I somewhat look at this like it should have been an all or nothing, and instead, it's a just the one, and the rest is nothing. And I would hope that in the future that we don't get stuck into something like that again.
Mrs. Rogalski?
Sorry, just one more question. I'm guessing that this is going to be a common theme for the next, however, remaining years, four more years of a start after Labor Day, to give that cushion probably for construction?
Yeah, I would say certainly, for the next couple, I would feel better if we had more time for Mr. Jesus to wax and open up schools and give folks a chance to move, yeah, at least, at least next year with Garvin going back.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is discussion and a vote on fiscal year 2023 Superintendent's Recommended School Budget. Now, we did, we don't, we voted on that.
That was there, and she was a placeholder. You did it. You are done.
We did it, so we don't need to do that. The next item on the agenda is discussion and a vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for the 2021/2022 school year. Motion by Mrs. Rogalski. There were none. There were none. There were none. Hold on.
I'm sure you have two in your packet.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogalski. Motion by Mrs. Rogalski, second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero. The next item on the agenda, the discussion and a vote to approve resolutions. Mr. Collins?
All right. Let's make this quick. No, I'm just kidding. There's 11 resolutions. First up is SCPI-03-2022-15. A resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to make a payment, a payment, to FNA engineering and testing of kinetic mass for work performed in January 2022 in the amount of $1,447.20. The only thing that came out of this, I have some notes here. Mrs. Demodica correctly pointed out that FNA has been charging us interest, and the bill was only two weeks old. So this will not impact this resolution. But we asked Mr. Pregnano to take a look and maybe speak to them. They expect, you know, I can't think of any company that charges interest if you don't pay it within like four days. Something, never mind, I'll stop there. But it did pass fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-03-2022-15. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Rogalski. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero.
Next is SCPI-03-2022-16. A resolution authorizing and empowering the Cumberland School Committee to make payment to Instruction Partners of Nashville, Tennessee for high school curriculum services in an amount not to exceed $23,000. This passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-03-2022-16. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven to zero.
Next is SCPI-03-2022-17. A resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to award a purchase order to Hussey Advantage to repair high school bleachers in an amount not to, in an amount of $13,270. This passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to...
Yes, I want to make a note, this is in the wellness center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-03-2022-17. Do we have a second?
Second with discussion.
Second by Mr. Ferriello?
Normally, I don't like passing things that don't have a fiscal note as to where the money's coming from, but I do know that it's not a lot of money. And as Mr. Collins explained to me earlier, that these bleachers are in very bad shape, which I think we've known about for some time. So I will be supporting this.
Yeah, I mean, I think, this came up in fiscal subcommittee. You know, we could delay this, but if some kid falls and breaks his neck, we could be on the hook for a lot more. So let's get this done. And we also just point out, since we're on the subject, McCourt's bleachers are going to be repaired, so we're going to be seeing that coming down the road as well.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven to zero.
Next is SC-PI-3-2022-18. A resolution authorizing and empowering the Cumberland School Committee to make payment to Torato Architects of Providence, Rhode Island for additional architectural and engineering services at J.J. McLaughlin Cumberland Hill Elementary School in an amount not to exceed $63,672.43. This passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-03-2022-18. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rogalski. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven to zero.
Next is SCPR-03-2022-19. A resolution authorizing and empowering the Cumberland School Committee to make a payment to Torato Architects of Providence, Rhode Island for services of furniture purchases at J.J. McLaughlin Cumberland Hill Elementary School in an amount not to exceed $27,226. This passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-03-2022-19. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rogalski. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven to zero.
Next is SCPI-03-2022-20. A resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve a payment to H.V. Collins Company of Providence, Rhode Island for January 2022 invoice payment number six for the J.J.M. Cumberland Hill Elementary School in an amount not to exceed $459,763. This passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-03-2022-20. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven to zero.
Next is SCPI-03-2022-21. A resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve a payment to H.V. Collins Company of Providence, Rhode Island for the January 2022 invoice payment number seven for the high school swing space in an amount not to exceed $98,783. This passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-03-2022-21. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rogalski. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero.
Next is SCPR-03-2022-22. A resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve payment for Colias International of Providence, Rhode Island for owners' representation services for the month of January 2022 in an amount not to exceed 90, $39,755.07. This passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-03-2022-22. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven to zero.
Next, SCPI-03-2022-23. A resolution authorizing and empowering the Cumberland School Committee to make payment to Torato Architects of Providence, Rhode Island for stage three work for J.J. McLaughlin Cumberland Hill Elementary School in an amount not to exceed $51,982.91. This passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-03-2022-23. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rogalski. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven to zero.
Next is SCPI-03-2022-24. A resolution authorizing and empowering the Cumberland School Committee to make payment to Torato Architects of Providence, Rhode Island for stage three work for Garvin Memorial School in an amount not to exceed $86,981.07. This passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-03-2022-24. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven to zero.
And finally, SCPI-03-2022-25. A resolution authorizing and empowering the Cumberland School Committee to make a payment to National Grid in an amount not to exceed $23,383.86. As much as all of us hate paying National Grid, this did pass fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-03-2022-25. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferriello. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven to zero. Thank you for that, Mr. Collins.
Yeah, why not?
Next.
Thank Mr. Pregnano for giving us 11 resolutions. But they had, bills got to get paid. And speaking of which...
Discussion and a vote to approve payment of bills.
Yes, we do. We have a payment of the bills, payment of the bills, in the amount of $1,402,806.67. I also want to point out for the record, out of that 1.4-plus million dollars, seven, $918,000-plus is going alone to BVP for tuition. So I'll let that sink in again. But the payment of the bills did pass fiscal subcommittee three to But the payment of the bills did pass fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve payment of bills. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorella. All in favor? Aye opposed? Passes seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next item on the agenda is school committee comments, school liaison reports. Any comments from the school committee? Ms. Smith?
Well, I know we're here tonight. I just wanted to say, I hope that the night went well for the Cake Wars, for the second night of the Cake Wars down at Community School, because I'm really looking forward to hopefully seeing some pictures and maybe the next one, the last one, we'll get to see.
Other comments? Mr. Demodica?
Madam Chair, I just want to encourage our school committee members to reach out to those in the town council that are in your district or at large. We have the budget season coming up. We have the tax levy coming up in April that could make a difference for all of us. And I know I've spoke with Mr. Demona, and I'm sure the superintendent as well, if anyone from the school committee, I mean, from the town council would like to have a private conversation with either one of them about the budget and SFR funds. I would ask the council chairman to send that out to the members. Thank you. Great.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Any other comments? Mr. Collins?
I don't think Ms. Malcolm, did she leave? Yeah, I want to thank Ms. Malcolm. She invited us to speak at, to speak, read at Cumberland Hill. And I went up there last week, and it was a lot of fun. The kids were, it was a fifth-grade class. The kids were very engaging. They asked a lot of questions I didn't have the answer to about a book I'd never read before. But it was a lot of fun, so I spent about a half hour, forty-five minutes, and it was a good time. So thank you in absentia, Ms. Malcolm, for inviting me to speak. Thank you.
And I just want to recognize the high school senior student athletes who were recently recognized as part of the athlete recognition day in, for continuing their sport at college. So that looked like a great event. Any other comments? Okay, then that brings us executive session. Dr. Thornton, I don't think we have...
All set, Madam Chair.
The next item is adjournment. Motion by Mrs. Rogalski. Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye opposed? We are adjourned at eight-twenty-three PM.